It's eight thirty D. About eighteen thirty. Six thirty and I'll call this meeting to an end possibly. Mr. Hall, would you give us where?
I look at family father, we come to you and recognizing your place in our lives and importance of following your will and your guidance. And we pray that you would give the council discernment of direction of decisions as we are called to make them. Thank you for each employee and each person who serves our community. And we just pray word that you would continue to to help our community to to grow in a way that would be beneficial to each one. We pray we pray word that you would minister to us as we minister to one another in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Can I join me as a second please?
I am the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first we can use Hall roll call please.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon here. Councilmember here. Councilmember Brooke.
Here.
Councilmember Riebel.
Here.
We have four more. First on the agenda tonight is review and approval of council meeting minutes. First is June seventeenth meeting minutes on the potential motion to approve as presented.
I make the motion.
Let's do them one at a time, let's do June seventeenth.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
You vote. Next on the agenda is June twenty-four special meeting, I'm intending to motion to approve.
No motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Department Courts and Financials. Uh, no financials for June, we'll get them next month. I entertain a motion to approve the Department Courts as presented.
No motion.
You oppose? Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is Plating Commission, Ms. Erin, would you come forward?
Good evening. We had a full agenda last month again, so I'm just gonna look at the thing. We had a variance for an accessory dwelling unit behind ten twenty at West, uh, West Second Street. Um, the daughter wants to go to the tiny home behind her parents' house so that she can be closer to them, take care of them. So we went ahead and approved that and also falls in line perfectly with the new A T U that the state's gonna be implementing in August, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, so there was no need to deny it, we'll just be approved next month.
Right.
And the next thing that we had was another, what was it, a variance for an R V U's gentleman at two fourteen Spring Street. His daughter's home burned down in Oklahoma and they're asking him to let her live in an R V in front of his home while her husband gets their affairs in order down there. So, uh, we approved that, I believe, for six months, not even a day of variance. And then lastly, uh, we approved several things on, uh, one oh eighty second.
The call station.
Call station. Um, so England excavating, is that okay? He's buying that specific part of it and he wants to be able to keep it gravel instead of having to, uh, pave it as per code. Because his machinery that he's gonna store there will tear up the concrete anyway, so there's no reason in him putting that in. So we, we thought that that was okay, so we approved the variance for a waiver on the paved parking. And then we also approved, uh, wood, eight foot wood fencing as a screen material.
This is clarification, it's a commercial, what's up against a residential, commercial property has to put a fence. Plating Commission has to approve, what type of fence goes up, they approved an eight foot wood fence.
And also, um, they're still waiting on some plot plans and surveys, so if they need a variance for twenty-five foot setback for the fence, then we would, um, we, we approved that if needed.
All these variances and may go approval by the council.
I have a question on that.
Okay.
So, um, the, the variance for the gravel, you said that property lets up for several residential. During this time of year, what kind of issues is that gonna cause with the neighbors with dust and everything else, with them moving around on gravel?
No difference, it already is, to be truthful. He's just not gonna approve the property, not approve the law thing with, uh, cement.
And it's not daily work trucks that he's gonna be using, it's for heavy equipment that he uses. So his hope is to not ever have heavy equipment there, so he's always busy and it's out on, you know, different properties on site. So it's just to park it there and then take it when he needs it for a new project.
The front is already, uh, got cement on for his trucks to administer it, I think. Alright, and the previous thing on the, uh, meeting minutes was the, uh, bottom class, here we go, that's approved in the special meetings. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the Plating Commission meeting as she presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Police Water Advisory Committee, has, uh, come over, been here before?
We, uh, we met last night and, uh, we got to look at the new forms that they're utilizing in, uh, um, water office for new, um, customers, thank you. And, um, we also discussed, um, some things that we're sending out for information to, uh, the community and, uh, we will not meet again until September.
Good, thank you. Any questions for this? Moving forward. Hold business. Orders two thousand twenty-five-ten, I'd prefer to read it title please.
And ordinance establishing procedures for permitting, renew, and placement of accessory dwelling units within the city of Ward. Establishing fees associated with the same and for other purposes.
Council's third reading for this. Uh, the state law will come effect in August fifth. If approved tonight, this will go effect thirty days after today, which will be a little bit after August fifth, which is, is okay. We can deal with that. Uh, but, uh, this just puts into motion, uh, our procedures for enacting that law.
Motion.
That I'd, motion to, uh, uh, approve on a third reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a second, we have any input, any public input? Hearing done, roll call please.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Heffler.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Riebel.
Yes.
Orders two thousand twenty-five-ten, they've approved on a, uh, third reading. I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve it.
Motion.
No motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Heffler.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Riebel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Orders two thousand twenty-five-ten has been approved and going to effect in thirty days. Next on the agenda is an update on the fifty acre lease and property on Highway thirty-one. Counsel, if you remember, it says, uh, lease property on Highway thirty-one, fifty acres, flat, it's completed with a protected wellhead. Used to have a, a, uh, pump out there for, uh, water, where you just get our water from. Um, we talked about last time, possible uses, solar farm, and that's not likely because it's too large for first electric and not close enough to the substation to get it at. Also possible usage, just let it go as an added habitat, lease for hay, it's currently leased, well, we terminated the, the lease. Uh, we could reinstate lease with neighbors or whatever. Uh, lease purchase plan or sell outright, and we still have probably a protected wellhead by state law. Did it appraise? Appraised for three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Counsel, open floor for discussion. What would you like to leave?
Does anybody wanna lease it?
There's, there's a party that would like to lease it for the same amount and leasing it, uh, is fine, keeps it in our name and, uh, they maintain it. As part of the problem back in the years, was letting anybody to maintain it and cut the hay off of it. We tried to go out there and do it, Frank could attest to this, it was, you know, fifty acres, it would tear up tires and all kinds of stuff. So if we have, then we said, they take care of it, which is fine. And that's actually my recommendation, is to, uh, authorize the nature there to lease if they, uh, uh, someone to continue, uh, using for hay, dudgeon, and, uh, head the progress.
And he lives right next to it, doesn't he?
Yes. Marty?
Where is it at?
You know where Charlie Olds is? Charlie Olds though? You can go out to Charlie Olds and turn the right and go back to it.
Dogwood Road.
Thank you.
Just south of the game and fish pond.
Needed us some years ago for, for one.
Make the motion for the mayor to, to lease agreement.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
A second, any discussion?
Price.
We'll go the same price, it's fifteen dollars an acre. We're not gonna, we're not very big money, but, uh, it's well worth them coming in instead of us.
And they're maintaining the whole thing?
Yeah, exactly.
And we keep it.
I don't disagree, it's more than the age will be the price.
Yes.
Probably the motion needs to be the amount.
Okay. Fifteen dollars an acre?
Fifteen dollars an acre.
What if I, your, your?
Make the motion for the mayor to, to lease agreement for fifteen dollars an acre.
Fifteen dollars an acre? Yeah, second?
Second.
And we've had discussion. All those members say aye?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries. Counsel? Next on the agenda is Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-two, read title please.
A resolution accepting C K asphalt as the low bidder to overlay Campbell Street, Cross Street, Mible Street. Authorizing inappropriate plans and authorizing the mayor and or city clerk to sign appropriate documents for the project.
Counsel, we had a, uh, we have a bid on this, had a bid opening, low, uh, bidders, and your packet was a copy of the low bidder sheet, we had two bidders. One was, this was ninety-one thousand four thirty-eight, and next bidder was a hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and two.
Motion to accept the bid.
We have a motion to accept the bid, approve Resolution two thousand twenty-five twenty-two? We have a second, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, thank you counsel. Next on the agenda is Resolution two thousand twenty-five twenty-three, read title please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and or city clerk of the city of Ward to apply for a grant on behalf of the city of Ward entitled Community Assistance Grant for the City of Ward ADA Compliance Project.
Counsel, this is part of the modernization here, we have an opportunity with a grant that will pay for the glass partial, remember the glass entry area between the city council and the main building? And ADA front doors and ADA, uh, bathrooms. To the, uh, what do you call that, the Community Assistance Grant, it's out there, quite a bit of money out there for this and C A P D will be putting this in for us and approved.
Motion.
Or motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Resolution two thousand twenty-five twenty-four, read title please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and or city clerk of the city of Ward to apply for a grant on behalf of the city of Ward entitled Community Assistance Grant for the City of Ward Emergency Water Tank Remediation Project.
Counsel, if you remember, we have a, we have a, actually approved low bidder to manage to paint and clean our tanks. This possibly, if approved, will pay for most, if not all of that project, if approved, so.
Motion.
No motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a review discussion of the two thousand twenty-three legislative audit results. I assume each of you got a magic from them, I assume you probably didn't read it. No. By law now, we have to go through a few of the things, next used to, we could just say, you got it, good. But now we have to actually go through the things, so, uh, bear with me as we go through a few of the audits that were discussed on the, uh, on the care system. First and foremost, we had no rights. That's over. But there's some things that we have to go through and make sure that we understand. First one was significant risks identified. We've identified the following significant risk. We identified management overrides and controls as a significant risk. We're required by professional standards to give a special audit consideration to management of, uh, to management override of controls. I asked the question, what does that mean? And the auditor sent back this. New auditing standards were issued a few years back and requires to communicate any significant risk that we identified to those charged with governance, uh, with the governance. Understood and understand those matters and why they require special audit consideration. Management override of controls has always been a significant risk with every audit that we do. In the past, we documented this in audit paperwork and did not include it in a letter that we received by council. The new professional standard requires the list in, in government's letter. Management override of controls will be listed in the audit letter sent to all miscounters. Basically, when our C P A changes a entry from one where it's supposed to, to where it needs to go, that's an override. And it's up to, it's, it's, they just have to say that. Okay. Next on, uh, qualitative aspects of accounting practices. Management is responsible for selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. No new accounting policies were adopted and the application of existing policies, including estimates was not charged, was not changed during the year. We noted no transactions entered into by the government, governmental agency unit during the year for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in proper period. Financial statements disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. Next, significant unusual transaction. Professional standards require to communicate to use significant unusual transactions identified during our audit. No significant unit, unusual transaction were identified as we held of our audit. Difficulties accounting with performing the audit. We encounter no significant difficulties in dealing with the management in performing or completing our audit. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Professional standards require to accumulate all known and likely misstatements identified during the audit. Other than those that are clearly trivial and communitate them to the appropriate level of management. Management has corrected all such misstatements. In addition, none of the misstation, misstatements detected as resulted in audit procedures and corrected by management or material either individually or individually. To each opinion, to each opinion, units, financial statements taken as a whole. And finally disagreements with management. For purposes this letter, disagreement with management, its financial accounting reporting, and or already mattered, whether or not resolved to our satisfaction, that could be significant to the financial statement or audit report. We are pleased to report that no such disagreements arose during the course of the audit. There you go. You have been so told. With that, I'd entertain a motion to accept the legislative audit, uh, report for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three as provided to you and as discussed.
No motion.
No motion, we have a second? Any discussion?
Discussion.
Hearing done, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, very good. Next on the agenda, discussion on the four oh four East Second property, if you're familiar, that's that. It's the, uh, Co-op, if you will, or Water Ops Building. We had it appraised along with the fifty acres, just to see what it would bring, and the appraisal amount of that is two hundred thousand dollars. Now, counsel, open for discussion. Talked about trying to sell it, uh, also rent it, uh, keep it, if some use it. Doing nothing right now, just see what happens in the future.
Are we using it now?
We are kinda using it, there's some storage that we're running through the operational room. There's some water equipment in there, uh, fact is, we're not gonna sell it now soon because police chief needs it when they bring in the, uh, cars and put in the, uh, cameras. We use part of that to do that, so I wouldn't sell the thing.
Is that, is that just for the building that, and the office is sitting on, or is that for the whole?
That's for all of them.
All the, all the gravel area?
Yep, yep, all the gravel area and building.
I think a lease would be nice to consider.
We could, we could open it up, we could advertise it for a lease. That's a motion to the council.
I like the two hundred thousand, ain't no point, so.
That's what I was saying.
Well, that's kinda what I wanted to say. So with counsel's motion of approval, we'll put it up for a lease and see what happens.
I make the motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to, uh, authorize the mayor to, uh,
When the police chief is done with it?
Okay. Uh, authorize the mayor to, uh, your motion to authorize the mayor to, uh, advertise for lease. Of course, I'll have to come back to you for lease approvals, because we'll send it. So we have a motion, right? A second on that? Any discussion? Hearing done?
I would have a question.
Go ahead.
So how, how do you determine the fair market value of that property?
And that I didn't talk over the leasing agent. And we'll have to see what it can lease for and to whom. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is my report. Sidewalks project four, phase four, from Chancery and Caston, we did obtain the R O, was right away, and, uh, put in all that paperwork when they discovered additional utility issue. After all of this was said and done, after this has been approved, what came through all the easements? Five rockets. And now we have five rockets, uh, fetuses in a way. So we gotta work on that. Sidewalk, uh, is phase five down Borough Street, still waiting for R D O to approve the microscope. Uh, phase six across Borough Track has been submitted, haven't heard anything about that. Uh, Wastewater Rehab, our health department, health has finally approved those plans. Getting pushed by A D C and A R C to bid out. If you remember counsel, uh, that's the seven hundred ninety-six thousand dollar rent, or excuse me, loan that we got from them. That, uh, we don't have to take if we don't want to, but we'll, I see what, what the cost is first and then we'll cross that financial bridge. We also got five hundred thousand from A D C on this project. Water tank rehab, we're waiting on the contract, so we go forward with that. And like I said before, we did put a grant, are putting a grant application in to A D C to possibly pay for a Porsche all of it. Water tank demo, that's paid at a hundred fifty thousand dollars, the loan bid came in at six hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. I rejected that bid and we are simply in time to close that tank off and no longer use it. Overlay of vinyl, we're waiting on the contract on that, uh, you approve the, uh, the, uh, uh, resolution tonight. Counsel, court rules, about ninety-five percent is complete, I suspect we can have our next meeting in that room. And our meeting will be the first meeting we have in that room. I love that court going there first. It's gonna be us, so, sorry. Sorry, go to judge then too, so. Uh, anyway. Three nineteen, uh, project, uh, submitted, waiting to make a decision in January. Uh, sports complex LED replacement project has been submitted, that's City Hall ADA upgrade, which we talked about. Kind of the vehicle cam project is gonna be soon, uh, July twenty-eighth, I think they started in the,
Twenty, the week to the twenty-eighth when they're doing the install.
Yeah. So that should, I'm still waiting on the live feed camera in October. Uh, U D O, uh, master land use map and rezoning map, it'll be presented to Plating Commission, uh, this month. And then I've already scheduled public hearings for the thirteenth and sixteenth, uh, for the public to hear these changes. No major issues are found or brought to our attention. It should be presented to counsel for approval to start the approval process next month. And if there are major issues, then we'll have to go back to Plating Commission, that's our idea. The E V and E V chargers, R R Ps have been, uh, completed, uh, they're gonna run on twentieth to forty-seventh of July with bid opening on the, uh, August eleventh. And, you know, the version, I said that already, we're still waiting for a, um, opinion from the A G on fire districts. And I'd like to also announce that there's a new restaurant coming to town, the old Rock's Bacon Taco, it's gonna be Jalapeno's Mexican Grill. Talked to the owner today, he's, I've been in there, he's really changing on this side, looks very nice. Uh, look forward to it, he's a very, uh, passionate guy, uh, I think he'll live me good, and I love another, sit down restaurant in our city.
He get electric license?
He's not a good guy. Mayor, you know what the party name is with the old thing for the new restaurant, you know? Yeah, it's live first of all, it's a margin on. Yeah, a couple of those probably, yeah. Very nice guy, uh, I, I wish he'd, I would work for him more, I think, well, I think they're good. You drive by, they've got a, uh, a fence out on the side, there's some outdoor seating out there. It'll be nice. Something new. And that is my, uh, mayor's report for today. Uh, I noticed we have one person signed up to speak. Jake, you wanna speak?
If you don't mind that, I still sit, I just had surgery.
Speak loudly so the camera can hear you.
What's going on on three nineteen with these broken telephone poles and wires hanging on the trees? Has you like that going on a year now?
Three nineteen, where, sir?
Right outside.
Uh, Moore Street.
Moore Street.
Yeah, Moore Street.
Right across the gas station.
You come down, come back.
You have two railroads from the gas station to the, uh, end. You got poles been snapped in half and wires just hanging there.
Oh, I do remember, no, four straight, that's a good point.
And the other question I have is, I haven't been here a while and I respect everybody for what they do, I gave you a list of things that people said to be done, nothing's been done. It's minor stuff, but just, again, trash. Dangerous stuff. Why hasn't anything been done? That's all I'm here for.
We do a lot of things, Jake.
What?
We said, we do a lot of things, uh, but there's certain things that you're.
Now, one thing's been done and these pictures were taken over thirty years ago. Now, I'm not talking, I'm talking about metal thing that a kid's gonna cut a leg on, stuff like that.
How about the, uh, the metal and telephone pedestal, right?
Yeah, I'll build some of it, yeah. It's a soup, it's not, it just looks awful.
We can't, it's just there.
And according to information I found out, uh, nobody's been notified. And the exact words they said, if somebody could call us and tell us what's going on, we'd take care of it. But I'm not that privileged for them to put in a work order, the city is.
Jake, you gave me that contact information, apparently I didn't contact the right person.
Well, you know how it is, you talk to somebody, one says one thing, but the thing is, these things haven't been done.
Give me, give me your contact information on all of them. If you would, I appreciate it. Alright, anything else, sir?
No, I don't understand why nothing's been done.
Alright, thank you, sir.
I've been here six months, I mean, it's the same old story.
Do we have any comments from the council, Charles, did you have something to add?
Yeah, uh, had somebody approach me about the fireworks. They have concern with the safety, especially in some of the neighborhoods where the houses close, closer together. About, uh, they observed people shooting fireworks under power lines and stuff falling off on roofs. Well, I'm concerned about that. Wondered.
I had a call last Sunday, talked to Senator Vigil, the, the neighbor, who was concerned about the debris following his, uh, yards and stuff. He also talked about people lowering their yards and throwing grass out of those little streets, a big conversation. And to your constituent, uh, you know, several years ago, we, uh, this council approved, uh, shooting fireworks off a certain time during July fourth, uh, the nineteenth. And it was basically because it was gonna happen anyway, it was happening. And it kept our law enforcement from having to respond to those calls of illegal fireworks going off during this time period. It just, it didn't make sense because they couldn't keep up with it for a long reason. I sympathize with people whose neighbors are not cleaning up their themselves, uh, of those who can't bring late behavior like others. I think, I think allowing, a lot of allowing people to shoot up fireworks, I think this year, we had the mindset, we're not, we had less problems fireworks. I didn't stop on July third, I stopped on Weatherwood, and some people were on the driveway shooting up all kinds of stuff. I, uh, identified myself, I told them, you couldn't do that, and, and it was a fine, you know, the economy ended, this is your warning, and cops come down there and they write you citation. Talked to one of our on-duty officers that ten minutes afterward, he said, no, I did, he had talked to them the day before. I said, okay, at your discretion, if you roll over next time, that's whatever you make it right. But, uh, I don't know if they did or not, next day or later, I don't know. But, uh, a lot of times, people just don't understand, even though we've cleared a house, uh, you know, our, our officers go around and tell them, or even I- Uh, you know, our, our officers go around and tell them, or even I, go around and tell them, they didn't know. Don't speak, but, uh, I, personally, I think it's, it's, it's good that we allow it, and they're going to do it.
I have a question. Is there any way to be, um, uh, maybe not, you know, I'm just thinking, to be creative? Would, would it be something that we could allow or set up so that neighborhoods, like if there, if so many neighbors didn't want that to happen in their neighborhood, say that they're, you know what I mean? If they're in a small neighborhood, they're on top of each other, if the all majority of that neighborhood petitioned to say they wanted that set, that zone to not have fireworks shut off because they're so close?
I suppose.
Yeah, like the speed bumps, that's exactly what I was thinking about.
I suppose that's a possibility, but...
Well, it would, it would...
And then what do you, then how do you enforce that?
Well, it'd be a whole neighborhood, that's what I'm saying, if you, you know, got people to...
There's no market in how to make sure one on a street scale. I mean, I don't say it's not a bad idea, but it's kind of right with speed bumps.
Well, but like with the speed bumps, though, what I was meaning that is that, that kind of fits it back onto constituents for them to rally together and say, we don't want this, majority just don't want this. So that's what I'm saying, because we were talking about, like she had suggested, you had so many acres of your weather. So that's not really fair to be like, work it up this much, you could, you didn't. But you, you know, majority of your neighborhood did not want that, and they...
Well, so, I agree with that, it's kind of good.
I would think you'd need to give them an alternate place to, to, uh...
They have an alternate place, they can always come up to the park and after the new park, they'll shoot off the, uh, blow it like that. There you go. What, uh, you can hear what, please? Oh. Eric, identify yourselves, there you are.
All the way back since the war. Nice to meet you too. This year on fireworks, was there a time, we, I thought I read on our Facebook page, there was a lot, a lot of time. What was that time this year?
It's the same, it's any order, it's like from twelve to midnight, yeah.
So twelve noon.
I thought it said midnight.
It may be, on New Year's Eve, I know it's midnight thirty or something.
So like the Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, it's from twelve noon until...
Fourth of July, or New Year's Eve, okay. I had, I had the...
Sure. What about Fourth of July, okay?
I was thinking it was the third, today.
It's like the day before.
I thought it's the day before and the day of.
It's the day of from ten to, uh, I think it's ten to...
Okay, I can, I can, I can agree with you, sure.
Yes, I was just curious what that, what that actual time window was, was it one, two, or three days? Because majority of folks do this too.
Two, two or three days.
And I guess, by, the second question is, when do you have, some of these fireworks, they're not normal fireworks, and they would, you'll buy on some of the city streets out. This year, people are good, aren't they? People are cleaning up after themselves, but the year before, man, there was just litter all around in the streets and the gutters, and there you can probably...
The one thing that you got to think about, cocaine's been illegal since the nineteen ninety, right? People still do it.
Yep.
So you pass these laws, that you can't have this and can't have that, it's not going to solve the problem. People are still going to fire whatever they want to, and they're going to do it when they want to.
Yep.
So all, by making laws, all you're going to do is, is bog down your law. They're going to be the ones running after, because when they find it, when the citizens find out they ain't running on fireworks laws, they're going to start calling in shots fired laws, you know, which requires officers to go there.
Okay, I've got it, it's from, uh, July fourth from twelve noon to ten thirty. December thirty-first from twelve noon to twelve thirty A M.
I could just want to get to my phone here.
There was some discussion about that there at times, there was some discussion about, actually, more days, but we said all that. Okay.
I have a question too, pertaining to fireworks. Is the U D O posted anywhere that I can pull it and read it for all the changes expended?
Uh, if it's not posted on, I know it was posted on the website. I'm waiting to know how much you're...
Thank you.
Is that in the, uh, two...
I'd rather read it now than wait until it comes up in the hope. You don't think I can read that much?
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Here you go.
I make a motion, we're done.
Well, we got to go through them, please. That's going on. All right, city office, well, they're on a date, so don't worry about it. I thought I had a chat motion, there's a...
Motion?
Motion. We have a motion there, go out here, planning commission on twenty-eighth, bid opening of E V charge station, E V eleven. The last, the H, U D O zoning land use, uh, public hearing, August fourteenth and sixteenth. Our next council meeting is August nineteenth.
Yeah, I suggest everybody go to that U D O.
All right, now we have a motion, second, all the members say aye?
Aye.
We are done. Thank you.